All right, planning board, we are live, we are recording, phone lines will remain off. Go for it.
Evening, everybody. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting of the Town of East Hampton for June 4th, 2025. We have six items on for our work session and about four or five others for a regular meeting. So we have a fairly ambitious agenda. We'll jump right into it. The first site plan review is Estee Restaurant, AKA Surf Rider. Ava, that's yours. Will for the Planning Department, and I see the applicant is with us. So Will, take it away.
All right, good evening, Board. So this is our second review of an application that was made seeking approval for a proposed restaurant, shed, decks, and parking on a site located on the southwest corner of Montauk Highway and South Emory Street in Montauk. Currently, the site consists of two separate properties which are proposed to be merged as part of this application. Combined, the subject property will be 22,138 square feet in size. The site is located within the central business zoning district and is considered to be 100% cleared of natural vegetation per town records. Currently, the sites are improved with a cottage with deck, sheds, bocce court, wood fencing, pool patio, and concrete swimming pool. The pool and other existing structures are accessory to the adjacent Sands Hotel, located directly to the south of the subject properties. Following your review of the Planning Board on March 5th, 2025, the Planning Board issued written comments to the applicant regarding its remaining issues. First, the Board requested the applicant provide a short environmental assessment form, Part One, which the applicant provided. The submitted SEAF Part One and mapper summary report indicate the site may be home to endangered northern long-eared bats, which the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has specific protection recommendations for. Without any forest habitat occurring on either subject property, it is unlikely the development of this project will have any negative effects on the northern long-eared bat habitat. Second, the Board requested the applicant submit a narrative outlining bar usage, hours of operation, and number of employees. The applicant submitted a narrative indicating no bar seating will be available. The maximum number of employees for the restaurant will be seven at any given time, and the restaurant will be open from breakfast to dinner. The Planning Department finds these responses appropriate. Although no exact hours were specified, the applicant has stated the restaurant will be open for most of the day. Third, the Board requested the applicant expand the drive aisle in the western parking area, and the applicant submitted a revised site plan indicating the drive aisle in the western parking area will range in width from 29.1 feet to 24 feet. The town code requires a minimum drive aisle of 24 feet for 90-degree parking spaces, and the applicant has provided that space, which the Planning Department recommends is appropriate. Next, the Board requested the applicant adjust the parking spaces in the eastern parking area to lie completely within the subject property. The applicant submitted a revised site plan showing the eastern parking area and spaces have been repositioned to be entirely within the subject property. The revised site, the revised site plan depicts the parking spaces of the eastern parking area to be located entirely within the subject property, which the Planning Department recommends is acceptable. Next, the Board requested the applicant provide the dimensions of the parking spaces in the eastern parking area, which the applicant identified on their revised site plan. The applicant has appropriately provided the sizes of these parking spaces. Next, the Board requested the applicant submit septic system details to include profile drawings and calculation details, which the applicant submitted. The town consulting engineer found the submitted information insufficient and requested drainage designs be provided for the entire site, including work within adjacent road right-of-way areas. The engineer also noted the design calculations and specifications for stormwater improvements were not provided, and proposed grades and contours should be provided for the parking area adjacent to South Emory Street. The engineer requested design grades be shown, be provided for the trench drain along South Emory Street, and the great elevation for the northerly drainage manhole should be lowered. Next, the Board requested the applicant clarify the calculations used for the second-floor seating. In determining, in determining the project density loading, the applicants utilized the standard figure of 10 gallons per day for the indoor seats required by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services for our restaurants, but utilized five gallons per day for the seats on the outdoor second-story deck, which appears to be the figure required by the Department of Health Services for outside patio banning. Provided these figures are acceptable to the Department of Health Services, the Planning Department does not have any objections. However, both the Board and the applicants should note that if the Department of Health Services requires a calculation based on assumed generated sanitary flow of 10 gallons per day for all seats, indoor and outdoor, it will reduce the number of restaurant seats permitted on the property. The applicants are encouraged to contact the Department of Health Services with regards to this issue as soon as possible. Next, the Board requested the applicant submit drainage structure details and calculations for the parking areas, which the applicant included in their septic site plan package. The town consulting engineer has indicated the sanitary improvements will require approval from the Department of Health Services. The Board also requested the applicant submit details regarding stormwater maintenance and drainage, which is included in the septic site plan package. The town consulting engineer has requested the applicant submit more information and make adjustments to the septic site plan package. The Board also requested the applicant minimize light spill over property lines and specify lighting temperatures for the chosen fixtures, and the applicant included this information in their lighting photometrics plan. In the submitted plan, the applicant has stated, has specified no lighting fixture will have a temperature greater than 3,000 degrees Kelvin. Some light spill may occur over the property lines, as depicted in the photometrics plan, and the Planning Board should discuss if this still is appropriate or if the applicant should revise their lighting plan to further eliminate lighting spill. On their lighting plan, the lighting spill is only shown over the southern property line, which is into the alley, which faces the Surf Rider Hotel, which is owned by the same group currently. Next, the Board requested the applicant provide a landscaping plan, which was submitted detailing the amount, type, spacing, and locations of the proposed landings. The provided plan depicts evergreen hedge screening along the northern and southern property lines, as well as inkberry evergreen screening trees at the western border of the eastern parking area. The Board should discuss if this amount of screening is acceptable for the proposed use of the site. Next, the Board requested the applicant submit dimensions between the proposed buildings and structures. The applicant submitted a revised site plan with greater details. No dimensions between the proposed buildings and structures were provided in this resubmission, and the Board should discuss whether it wishes to waive this requirement or if the applicant should provide this information in the next submission. Next, the Board requested the applicant submit details regarding the proposed parking circulation pattern, and revised plans were submitted detailing the parking areas. The Planning Department notes spaces number nine and 14, and potentially other spaces in the western parking area. Those spaces are the southernmost in this parking area here and here. They need to be removed to provide a proper turnaround area at the terminus of the western parking lot. The Board requested the applicant submit materials of the proposed structures, and the new submitted elevations include those proposed materials. The materials proposed for the exterior of their new restaurant include hardy plank horizontal artisan siding with a color to match the adjacent hotel, orange hardy plank trim boards or four-inch AZAC trim with a color to match the adjacent hotel, Marvin Elevate doors and windows, and a metal standing seam roof with a color to match the adjacent hotel. Finally, the Board requested the applicant address the Planning Board's concern regarding depth-to-groundwater issues for both the building and sanitary system, and the applicant submitted test hole data indicating groundwater was encountered at 2.8 feet below ground, and the highest expected groundwater elevation is 3.8 feet below ground per the USGS Long Island Depth to Water and Hydrologic Conditions Viewer in 2010. The town code requires a minimum separation of two feet between structures and groundwater, and this is shown on the submitted site plan, septic plan. In addition to the previously mentioned requests, the town consulting engineer has requested the applicant make the following changes. One, both tax map parcel numbers should be annotated on the site plan drawing. Two, there appears to be existing at-grade and buried improvements on the site that would need to be removed. The removals and demolition work associated with the proposed application should be annotated on the site plan drawings. Three, a highway work permit would be required from the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the proposed improvements required by relocating the driveway/curb cut along Montauk Highway. Four, a highway work permit would be required from the Superintendent of Highways for work required within the road right-of-way of South Emory Street and the onsite adjacent perpendicular parking stalls. A trench drain is proposed along the property line of South Emory Street, which would involve construction activity and restoration within the road right-of-way. The applicant should provide the above information and make the requested changes in order for a full engineering review of the proposed project to occur. The Planning Department has reviewed the necessary elements of site plan and notes the dimensions between all proposed buildings and structures, while missing from the applicant's submission are not relevant to the review of the proposed project and need not be provided, and the Planning Board should discuss if it agrees. In conclusion, the applicant should provide the estimated hours of restaurant operation, submit drainage details for the entire site, including work in adjacent road right-of-ways, provide the design calculations and specifications for stormwater improvements, submit grades and contours for the parking area adjacent to South Emory Street, lower the great elevation of the northerly drainage manhole, add both tax map numbers to the site plan drawing, annotate structures to be removed and demolished on the site plan, and obtain highway work permits from the New York State Department of Transportation and the East Hampton Superintendent of Highways. The Board should discuss whether it wishes the applicant to reduce the amount of light spill over the property lines, and if waiving the requirement of finished floor elevations and dimensions between buildings is appropriate. The Planning Department recommends the Planning Board request lead agency status on this project for secret review.
Thank you very much, Will, very thorough. Does the applicant wish to be heard? For the record, Lori.
Yes, Lori will chair for Land Planning Services, representing Estee Restaurant. And Marley Dominguez, Estee Restaurant. So yeah, we've gone over this as a team. We have some minor revisions to make on these plans, which we intend to do very quickly and get them into view very quickly. The one thing that we don't think needs to be addressed is the light spill issue, because that is literally spilling onto an unopened alley behind the restaurant, which also illuminates the pathway for the people coming from the hotel to the restaurant at night, which is probably a safe factor, is not going to have any effect on any other property on. There will be no outdoor seats at all. I mean, not outdoor seats, bar seats, sorry, outdoor or any bar seats. And everything else is going to be adjusted in a resubmission. Marley, you want to add anything?
That's the main stuff, yes.
Oh. My name.
Marley Dominguez. The hours of operation, I know that was the other one. The honest answer is we're not sure exactly. Well, we'll probably open around 7:00 AM. We're not sure when we'll close in the evenings. It might be a phase close. The outdoor areas will close earlier in the evening. We don't want outdoor no-ways for our hotel guests that are close. This is not, there's no chance it's going to be like a 2:00 AM type of place by any means. We'll probably think of more like 10:00 PM. But I wasn't sure if I submitted something that was like, I didn't want to make false promises, but what I can tell you is it's not like a 2:00 AM type thing. It's more like a 10:00 PM type of thing. But is that 9:00? Is it 11:00? I'm not totally sure. But we see this more as a till sunset type of location mainly, particularly the roof, and then the interior kind of a TBD, so.
I think we were just looking for guidelines on that, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I sent this to Lori. I'm not sure if they made it in, but yeah.
Right, it's not our purview to dictate your exact business hours, but till sunset or slightly beyond is probably a decent answer, but I'll let Ava talk about that.
Thank you, Will, and thank you, Lori, and thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Actually, your narrative I did read, which was very thorough, and you do have anticipated hours of operation on here, so I think we can probably include that in the record, so unless it changes, but it's exactly what you just cited. You guys came back with a lot of things checked off. Obviously, there's some work to be done still with the septic calculations and, you know, the feedback from the town consulting engineer. The seating, the, the, the calculation used for the second-floor seating, I know that came up last time as well. I, I think that certainly, as the recommendation from the Planning Board to work with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services to obviously clarify that, I would think that that will have some type of, that may, that may impact the septic.
We brought TF Engineering.
She's going to speak.
Sorry.
I won't speak for David, but we brought TF Engineering here on the, on the seating. Well, I should probably let him speak. It's way below my pay grade.
I don't want to interrupt you. Is it okay to?
Yep.
No. Just give your name, David.
David Rhodes with TF Engineering. I just wanted to cover a couple of items. As far as the indoor/outdoor seating, there is no difference from a county standpoint, whether it's an upstairs deck outside or a patio outside deck. It's just, is it indoor or is it outdoor? And if it's indoor, it's 10 gallons per day. If it's outdoor, exposed to the elements, then it's five gallons per day. And this is something we've done with Suffolk County numerous times, and I don't see any difference that this is going to go through.
What's rationale? I'm just curious.
Well, the rationale is that it incline at whether you're not going to be filling those seats, right? So they're only going to be filled part of the time, during the rain, during the cold spells. You're not going to have people out there.
Yeah.
And a second item I'd like to mention is there was a lot of comments on drainage here. Later on in comment nine, Vinnie acknowledged he found the drainage calculations. They were on the septic. We're going to reformat them so they're easier to find, but they were there. So they just, they didn't find them until they reviewed the septic site plan, and then they found the drainage calculations. And I think on, on item number seven, I think that should have some, a little bit of clarification. It says that two-foot of separation of groundwater should be present for all proposed structures. That technically should say leaching structures. When it comes to septic, solid structures do not need to be two-foot of separation, provided they have proper anti-voyancy measures. So I think that's all. Oh, and one other thing is that we did talk to the superintendent today, and what they led us to believe is that with the little amount of work we're doing between the edge of the pavement and the property line, they did not feel that a permit is required from them, but we'll clarify that, so.
That was the town super, Steve Lynch?
Yeah, well, it was his deputy.
Okay, all right.
It was Steve Lynch's deputy that, that responded, that had told us that today. So that's what we're going to perceive based on that, that is not required, based on his.
We'd like to hear from him on that.
Yeah, that's fine. And then as far as drainage, we're actually, you know, the onsite drainage runs into the road now. We're cutting the drainage off on the property, so we're actually decreasing any drainage that would be going to any public storm drainage.
Are there any basements?
Any basement on this?
There's, there's no, no basement.
Okay, thanks, David. Ava, anything else?
On, just on the, on the lights village, I did look at the, the updated plan. Like Lori said, it is aggregated right up on that southern alley. So I, I would agree with that. I don't think any further, you know, further review or revisions are needed in that respect. There's no lights village on the north part of the plan. You know, there was some comments from the fire marshal that there was no ADA compliance at all listed anywhere in a, in a memo, and that was noted on, in number 12 as well. So I think that just needs to be addressed. And, oh, the, if we wish to waive the requirement for, what is this? There was no dimensions between proposed buildings and structures. I think that that should be included, just to confirm, you know, compliance with safety regulations and any setbacks. That's pretty much all I got.
All right, thanks, Ava. Anyone else have any other comments, thoughts, questions? I have one question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but last time you were here, you said there'd be a clear division between the pool and the restaurant. That still holds?
Yeah.
Okay. It just looks like, looking at more detailed plans, it looks like.
Yeah, can you shout, can I point it out on here?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there is a fence here for one. And then this is a walkway, which was required from, we were required to have a walkway from the sidewalk to the entrance of the restaurant. So this is a walkway here, and then there's actually a door here, which was also apparently required into the restaurant. There's no openings whatsoever on this fence line, and there'll also be landscaping. So we actually want this separate. So this is just for our hotel, like. So it's a, it's a luxury of staying at the hotel, essentially. So this is not public. So the only entrance is actually right here into the pool, and then there'll be hedges all around as well. So there'll be a fence and hedges. So hopefully, it's a nice little oasis type of thing.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other questions or comments, concerns? Okay. All right, let's go to the questions then, if that makes sense. Should the applicant specify the estimated hours of restaurant operation? I think you've done that to our satisfaction. It's, you know, use and general timeframes that we're looking for, given that. Should the applicant, does everyone agree?
Yeah.
Should the applicant submit drainage details for the entire site, including work in adjacent road right-of-ways? Yeah, it might have been, it sounds like it's been done, but we need to talk to Department of Highways about that, get that forwarded directly to us about that. Should the applicant provide design calculations and specifications for stormwater improvements? I think maybe that falls into the same category. Yep. Should the applicant submit grades and contours for the parking area adjacent to South Emory Street? I don't know. Yeah. Eric, did you have thoughts about that from earlier today? Are you with us?
I do not see Eric in the participants. Yes, I do, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I'm under EH planning, sorry.
Contours and grades, we didn't really talk about that earlier, I don't think.
Yeah, we didn't talk about that earlier. The thing we talked about, I think, is the elevations, the first floor elevations. But the grades and contours for the parking area near South Emory was requested by the engineer. That may fall in along the lines with the drainage and stormwater calculations. It might be on the provided plans, but we'll, we'll check with the, the engineer asked for that. We'll check with him, and, you know, if that information wasn't provided, it should be provided, because that's necessary to figure out how the runoff is going to, you know, where the runoff is going to go from that area.
Did you want to comment, David?
Yeah, probably. They're on there. All right.
No. So I see grades.
So, yes, on the east side, we are going to add some additional spot elevations to show the grades that are happening over there. That's why Vinnie was asking for. So we are going to add those details. There's also a comment about lowering the drywall at the entrance. We, the current design now has it going down to that drywall, and then coming back up to the property line and then going out. We did not have the two-spot elevations that indicated that rise once you come off the drywall. So we're adding those two-spot elevations, along with the spot elevations on the east side with the trench drain and, and parking on that east side.
Okay. All right, I think this next question is probably going to fall into the same category, right? Should the applicant lower the great elevation of the northerly drainage manhole? I think all of this is really stuff that we need to discuss with Highway Department and the engineer and sort of get to the, get to the right answer, but I think you've provided most of what's required here. Unless someone disagrees. Should the applicant submit a circulation pattern for the proposed western parking area?
Probably, yes. Yes. As it seems.
Yeah.
So, can I?
Yeah.
There was the circulation arrows on there. I think Dan had provided that, but they're small, so make them larger. Is that, was that the thing that we?
Eric, that's really what we're looking for, basically, right? Is just to make it clear what the circulation pattern is. The arrows were a little bit difficult to see.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, really, the way that that western parking area is set up, I mean, it is somewhat obvious what the circulation pattern would be, you know? It's two-way traffic in each direction. We didn't really get into it in the discussion, but I do think the applicant should consider relocating spaces nine and 14, simply because, you know, as you look at the site plan there, anyone that comes to the terminus of that western parking area is going to need to either make a 10-point turn in that lane if those spaces are occupied or reverse the entire length of the parking area. So the original comment was more about the notation on the site plan showing the arrows of travel, but I do want to point out while we're talking about it that those might be problematic. Most of the time, what people do in a configuration like that is have spaces nine and 14 be hash-marked and reserved as turn, you know, turning areas for a car that comes to the end of the parking lot. So I think we would want to see circulation arrows, although that's a minor thing. The more important point I think to make is that those spaces could be problematic.
I'd be curious to hear y'all's opinion on this, honestly. I've certainly seen plenty of parking lots done this way that have kind of a terminus, so I don't know if we need to have a U-turn. I mean, a U-turn wouldn't fit. We could. I would also say, I don't know if we need to get rid of both parking spaces, as long as there's one to pull in, reverse out of, and then do a T-turn, essentially. I don't know why you'd need two. You certainly wouldn't utilize two, most likely, but I would think one, because then you have 40-something feet, but I'm asking a question, actually.
Do you want to have an opinion about this?
Yeah, I have some, I, I do have an opinion, and I do think it is a good idea to remove both, because if you're pulling in and, you know, those two spots are, are taken, you know, then you end up having to back out, or as, you know, Eric said, make a 20-point turn. So I do think both, it might be important, especially if it's a restaurant and a bar, and people have had, you know, a glass of wine or whatever, and then trying to get out of there. Well, I'm being, you know, realistic.
I would also just ask again, if we designate one for that turnaround, why would we need to take away those? Because it seems like 40-something feet would be enough to reverse.
I think what he's saying is if you're in.
Yeah.
If you, I don't know what numbers there are, but if you're, you're backing out, you turn into that?
Yeah.
So if you're in nine or 14, you have no way of getting out. So what he's saying is that little area taken up by nine and 14 lets you back into that space and then out.
I think what Eric was saying, correct me if I'm wrong, but what he was saying, if we have these two parking spots and they're both occupied, and, yeah, so let's say all the spots are occupied.
Yeah.
Somebody drives in, then they get to then realize that both spots are occupied. Then they have no way to turn around.
But I do think Bruce's point is good as well, you know, because if you're in those spots, then you really do have no place to go. I would think taking those spots out would be just a safety. I hate, I hate getting into a parking lot.
Is the alley pedestrian or?
It is, it's pedestrian. Well, that's another thing too, is like, I mean, realistically, this is 20 feet wide, and somebody could really just, this is, will never have anything in it. So there's a 20-foot exit right up to the street here, which is 150 feet. It's not far. And that is level, so.
Let me just, Richard, well, just right. And I think what all these say is, and I understand what the issue is, if you remove one of the spaces, in other words, make it a non-space, then whoever's in the opposing space does have a place to back into. Or if you get to the end of the aisle and you can turn around, you do have. Or if you get to the end of the aisle and you can turn around, you do have, you know, no, because I don't think you have to remove both.
Because.
Maybe remove one.
That's what you're saying is, to address your comment, Jennifer, if somebody's here and they're backing up, like, yeah, they can't come. Well, I mean, they can, because that's just flat grass, but let's just say hypothetically, we're not putting a wall here, by the way. They could reverse to this empty space, reverse all the way back and then come out.
All right, listen, there are a number of ways we could cut this, right? And I think, I don't think that we're gonna adjudicate this right now on the spot. I think, you know, the thing to do is to work with the planning department and come up with a reasonable. You understand what our concern is, right? There are a lot of hairy parking situations in Montauk, right? And we don't want to add another one to them. So let's just make sure everything's good. You can turn around if you get down to the end and there's no parking space, all of them we've just raised. But I think it's a matter of just working with the planning to come up with the right solution.
And then just the other part on that was, because I didn't think about this frankly previously, but what are, I'd be curious to hear people's thoughts on just coming out here.
I think that's.
Because that was the original intent of these alleyways in the first place was.
I think we just would have to confirm with council as to, you know, who has right of way there and whose alley is it? That's the question, yeah.
Right.
Because you'd be adding, I know it's your property behind, but from what the other town attorney was saying earlier today, the, all of these alleys in Montauk are kind of un.
They're sort of questioned.
They're questioned, you know, so we would have to figure out who's alley, whose alley is it anyway?
Right. A conversation with the planning department, I think we'll get to the bottom of all of this, right? So let's, let's just treat it that way. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Should the applicant confirm a two-foot separation to groundwater will be present at all proposed leaching structures? Yes. Should the applicant add both tax map numbers to the site plan drawing?
Yes.
Should the applicant annotate the structures to be removed and are demolished on the site plan drawing? That's an engineer's comments.
Yes.
Yes.
Should the applicant obtain highway work permits from New York State Department of Transportation and East Hampton Superintendent of Highways? We talked about that. Yes. Does the board wish the applicant to reduce the amount of light spill over the property lines?
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary. Does everyone kind of agree? Are we good?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it actually does provide a little ambient light in that alleyway, so that's a good thing. And then finally, does the board wish to waive the requirements of finished floor elevations and dimensions between buildings?
I think I saw finished floor elevations on.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just to clarify.
Yeah, let's, let Eric speak with that for a second. Yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, that was an error in the memo. We actually meant to amend that in versions when we were talking about it. The finished floor elevations, not to be confused with elevation plans, are, the finished floor elevations are provided on the elevation plans. So the applicants have submitted that information. The dimensions between buildings is a codified requirement that hasn't been provided. There is a good amount of distance between the buildings they're proposing, but that you should determine whether or not you want to waive providing that information on the site plan.
It's easy to add.
It's easy to add, right? I think we're all feeling it's easy to add, right? Are we all feeling that? Easy to add? Okay. So yes, thank you. Right. So then the final question for us is, do we wish to request lead agency status on this project? We do. Okay. Can we do that, Eric, right now? Declare lead agency?
I mean, you can say on the record that you wish to declare lead agency status, but it's somewhat unnecessary because it's really a matter of sending out that request to the other involved agencies. You know what I mean? So you can't just declare it. You have to declare your intention to be lead agency and then send out the required notifications. You know, semantics.
Yep. All right. So we have the intention to declare lead agency. Yes?
Yes.
All right, good. Folks, I think we're done. I think we're done for today, for now, with this one. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, you know, what else is there? Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Before we continue, I neglected to introduce our new deputy town attorney, Brittany Coda. She's gonna be supporting us going forward here on the planning board. Brittany comes from the county and has a lot of experience in municipal law. She actually worked on the Suffolk County Planning Commission. So a lot of, a lot of great experience. We're happy to have you, Brittany. Welcome. Okay. All right. So that we move on to the Cun subwaiver review. Jen, that will be you. Will, that's you again. And is the applicant with us? All right. Great. Thanks. Okay, welcome.
All right. So this is an application seeking subdivision waiver approval for a property located on Springs Fireplace Road in Springs. If granted approval, this project could create two 20,000 square foot lots, both having road frontage on Springs Fireplace Road. The subject property is currently 40,000 square feet or 2.92 acres in size and is located within the B Residence zoning district. The site is considered improved or partially cleared per town records and is approved with a single-story, single-family residence with sunroom, shed, and patio. Lot one is proposed to contain the existing residence, shed, and patio, while lot two is proposed to contain a new residence, detached garage, deck, and pool, which are yet to be constructed. The site was originally created as two lots as part of the Clearwater Beach subdivision approved by resolution on February 24, 1960. At some point, the lots were merged, and this application seeks to revert back to having two lots. The lot is currently surrounded by residential properties on all sides with one vacant parcel across the street, all of which are zoned B Residence. Following the review of the planning board on February 5, 2025, the planning board issued comments to the applicant regarding several issues. First, the board requested the applicant submit a short environmental assessment form, part one, which was included in the resubmission. The submitted SEAF part one identified the new sanitary system for lot two and the potential presence of endangered species on site, including the northern long-eared bat and piping clover. Given the existing habitat type, the presence of piping clovers on site is highly unlikely. Planning department recommends the applicant comply with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation guidelines to protect potential populations of northern long-eared bats. These guidelines include avoiding clearing and forest management activities from March 31 through November 1 in order to avoid unintentional harm. And so the planning board, planning department recommends the planning board assume lead agency status for this project. Second, the board requested the applicant submit more details regarding the proposed sanitary system for lot two. And the applicant submitted a response letter which stated the new sanitary system for lot two will be a low nitrogen sanitary system, Fuji Clean IA septic system. Additionally, the subwaiver map illustrates the location of the sanitary systems for both proposed lot one existing and proposed lot two, which is hypothetical. The applicant has made application to the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and there does not appear to be an issue with situating existing or future conforming sanitary systems on either lot. The town consulting engineer issued comments on April 11, 2025 regarding the proposed subwaiver. No engineering issues were found in the review of the plans, except the engineer notes a permit from the highway department will be required for work within the town road right of way on Springs Fireplace Road. The planning department recommends the submitted SEAF part one is an acceptable form and recommends the planning board request lead agency status. If the board chooses to request lead agency status for this project, the planning department will route lead agency request letters to the involved agencies. In conclusion, the board should discuss whether it wishes to assume lead agency status for the, for this application. And once the process of establishing lead agency status under secret is completed, planning department recommends this application will be complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Will. Does the applicant wish to be heard?
Not heard. Good evening, everyone. No, like that.
Name, please name it.
My name is Darius Khan. I'm the owner. I'm here to answer any more questions and see if you guys can give us more homework. But, you know, I, basically, we review the.
No concerns, no questions. All right. Stay close. See if we have any questions. Jennifer?
Thank you, Will, and thanks, Mr. Cun, for attending the meeting tonight. This seems to me to be fairly straightforward. Both lots will conform to the zoning code if, you know, we approve the subdivision. And I think, I do think it's ready to be scheduled for a public hearing. I don't think.
To discuss.
To discuss.
Anyone have any comments?
I agree.
Thoughts?
I agree.
All right. Do, does the planning board wish to, let's say, request lead agency status for this project? Does the board agree this application is complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing once lead agency has been established?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, complete and ready. So there you go.
No homework.
No homework.
No homework. It's still light outside. Plenty of day left. Right. Thank you very much. Okay, great. All right. So moving right along, we have the Bree Sauce Padel Courts. And Ava, that's back to you. Will, that's your application. If you, the, the applicant is here? Is that you, Tara? Yeah.
Tara.
All right.
Okay, so this is an application seeking approval to construct three new Padel Courts. An airstream camper to be used as storage, a storage container, sauna, shade pavilion with two decks, two sheds, and turf in lieu of existing lawn on the subject property located on Daniel's Hole Road in Wayne Scott. The site is 24.2 acres in size and located within the special groundwater protection area, Suffolk County Pine Barrens, and is the only property within the town's recreation overlay district. The site is zoned A5 residence and is currently approved with a single-story frame building, ten sheds, a pool, four parking areas, a building on slab with six indoor tennis courts, a single-story building on slab, an outdoor bar, a mini golf building on slab, a mini golf course, two platform tennis courts, a single-story building on piles with decking, 18 outdoor tennis courts, three Padel Courts, and a single-story frame building with porch and wood decking. The site is bordered by vacant land owned by the towns of the northwest and south and vacant land owned by Suffolk County to the east. This project is a type-two action pursuant to secret in chapter 128 of the town code, and no further secret action is required at this time. According to the town schedule of off-street parking requirements, the parking requirement for a tennis club is four parking spaces per playing court. This application proposes replacing two existing tennis courts with three new Padel Courts with the sum of an additional new court. With the addition of that new court, the total number of parking spaces required for the site will be 249 spaces. Currently, the site provides 325 parking spaces, which is 76 more than are required by town code regulations. No new parking spaces are proposed or required as part of this application. In addition to the proposed Padel Courts, the applicant also proposes to add an airstream brand camper, storage container, sauna, shade pavilion with two decks, with decks, sheds, and turf in lieu of existing lawn for the site. All these structures are proposed to be located in the eastern section of the lot, aside from the turf in lieu of lawn, which is proposed to be located adjacent to the mini golf building and the southwest section of the site. Other structures appear on the site plan but are not listed elsewhere in the application materials and not shown on the most recent certificate of occupancy. These structures include an outdoor shower, two plunge pools, and a ramp. The applicant should explain the presence of these structures and provide dimensions of them for review if they do not already have approval. A lighting plan and fixture cut sheets were submitted demonstrating each Padel Court will have four lighting fixtures. These fixtures will be downward facing and directed only at the playing surface of the courts. The lighting plan indicates the features, the fixtures will be solar powered and controlled by timer. The specification sheets for the fixtures indicate three different color temperatures are available, with the lowest being 3,000 degrees Kelvin. The applicant should confirm the fixtures will not exceed the lighting temperature of 3,000 degrees Kelvin to ensure compliance with dark sky and town code regulations. The planning department has reviewed the elements of site plan required by town code and notes finished floor elevations and topography, while missing from the applicant's submission are not relevant to the review of the proposed work and need not be provided. The planning board should determine if it agrees. In addition to site plan review, the proposed project will require approval from the architectural review board. In conclusion, the applicant should submit details regarding the proposed outdoor shower, plunge pools, and ramp, and clarify the proposed lighting temperature. Board should discuss whether waiving the above list of elements is appropriate for this project.
Okay, thanks, Will. Does the applicant wish to be heard?
Chairman, members of the board, I'm Tara Burke for Lythas Land Siding here on behalf of the applicant. Will, thank you for your synopsis. I appreciate it. I don't really have a lot to add unless you have any questions. We're basically, the Padel that you approved last year was a success, so, which is great. So they want to expand and take up a couple more of the tennis courts with new Padel Courts and then reorient the existing ones due to the way the sun shines on the courts. And then in addition to that, as Will noted, they have a couple of accessory structures. The airstream is for storage. There's another storage container, a sauna, shade pavilion with the decks, two sheds. And then the, I know Will had pointed out, the outdoor shower, the two plunge pools, those are proposed as well. So I'm happy to submit dimensions and the specifications that you would need for the next review. And the ramp, that's just a concrete ramp meant to connect the existing to the proposed, and I can get you details on that as well. And then as far as the lighting goes, the lighting proposed is the same lighting that was approved on the other Padel Courts, and it is 3,000 Kelvin, and I will submit that in writing as well.
Okay.
That's all I have. Unless you have any questions?
All right, Tara. Thanks. Ava?
Yeah, thanks, Will. Thanks, Tara. I kind of just to reiterate what Tara said, the, those additional structures that, you know, the details obviously are needed. They weren't cited on the plans. The cut sheets for the, the lighting did list three, the three separate, you know, you know, proposed lights. So I guess just confirmation that, you know, the approved 3,000 degree Kelvin lights will be implemented. And I, with regards to waiving the, waiving the finished floor elevation and the topography, I would agree this, this site plan, Billy, it's not relevant to that requirement. So I'm in favor of waiving it.
The courts are there, basically, yeah. Foundation of courts. Okay. All right, good. Anyone else have any issues, questions?
I'm just curious about the, what is the process of converting a tennis court to a Padel Court? You're still using the, if it's a hard court, you're still using the tennis court surface for Padel?
The tennis, I think it's actually, last time I was there, I think it's, it's slightly elevated off of the tennis court surface, if I remember correctly. But it's going from one type of playing court to another type of playing court. So it was determined that when you switch from one type to another type, you need the additional review. It does trigger parking because we're going from two to three, but there are 76 excessive spaces, which is like unheard of in this town. We can only take some of them and put them elsewhere. So.
Okay. I, I, there might be one day when you want to convert it back to a tennis court. I'm not gonna call Padel a fad by any means, because that would just come back to haunt me. But I was just curious about that. Thank you.
I have one question. Are these courts adjacent to homes?
No, it's, I don't know if there's an aerial, but it's.
Have you been in the clubhouse?
Very deep in.
Well, the reason I ask is this is a significantly louder game than tennis is. And I know that other, other clubs have had issues with homeowners being upset.
So what's so amazing about this site and why is the only one in the rec? So if you look at the definition of a major recreational facility in the town code, it's like this giant definition that basically encompasses anything you could possibly imagine recreation. And this is the only property in the recreational overlay district. And it has significant clearing restrictions, and it's in the middle of the woods. So it's kind of the perfect spot for it.
Good, good.
Yeah.
You're just competing with noise of planes.
Yeah.
And dogs barking.
And dogs barking at our. Yeah. Okay. Okay. If there are no other thoughts or questions for Tara, we'll go to the questions. Should the applicant submit details and dimensions of the proposed shower, plunge pools, and ramp? We've already said you would, I think we obviously need those. Has the applicant confirmed the proposed lighting temperature?
Yeah, that I will submit it in writing.
Yes, right, obviously, next time around, it'll be in writing. Does the board agree to waive the requirement of finished floor elevations and topography for this application?
Yes.
I think we agree, yes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Tara.
Thanks, Tara.
All right. Okay, next up is the Breakers awning. And Reed, that's you. Will, back to you once again. And is the applicant present? Lori, okay.
Okay, so this is a site plan application seeking approval for an existing awning, awning over a deck on a site located on Old Montauk Highway in Montauk. The subject property is 56,162 square feet, or 1.289 acres in size, and is located in the resort zoning district. The site is considered to be 100% cleared of natural vegetation per town records. The site is currently improved with a restaurant, twelve one-story buildings containing a total of 26 motel units, a storage shed, wood decking, a swimming pool, pool fencing, and a concrete patio. The site is bordered to the east and west by other resort parcels, residential lots to the north, and conserved land owned by the town of East Hampton across Old Montauk Highway to the south. The project is a type-two action pursuant to secret and Chapter 128 of the Town Code, and no further secret action is required at this time. Based on the setback requirements for resort lots in the Town Code, the subject awning is in a compliant location. However, if approved, the site will have greater building coverage than is permitted with 8,424 square feet allowed and 9,376 square feet existing. As such, this, this application will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. Currently, the awning has string lighting on its underside to illuminate the deck area. The bulbs of the string lighting are not shielded and not dark sky compliant, and the Town Code prohibits unshielded string lighting. However, the board may choose to permit string lighting if the bulbs are fully shielded and have a temperature not exceeding 3,000 degrees Kelvin. The applicant should either change the string lighting to comply with dark sky regulations or remove the string lighting entirely. As the building coverage on site is greater than the permissible amount, this application will require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. The applicant submitted an application to the zoning board, which was stated received on March 19, 2025. Yesterday, the applicant submitted additional documents listing the materials and dimensions of the subject awning. The awning is built from a galvanized steel-welded frame with acrylic fabric. The submitted photo contains labels identifying the dimensions of the structure. And the planning department has reviewed the necessary elements of site plan required by Town Code and notes the following items, while missing from the applicant's submission, are not relevant to the review of the project and need not be provided. The planning board should determine if they agree. Lot area and floor area for each floor of all existing and proposed building, structures and uses, locations of all easements on, over, and adjacent to the site, locations of utility lines, hydrants, fire cisterns, and fire wells, parking dimensions, aisles, three approaches, general circulation pattern, traffic safety devices, sidewalks, curving, paving, drainage structures and specifications, parking and drainage calculations, existing lighting and locations of signs, fences, screen plantings, and exterior lighting, existing and proposed sewage disposal systems, and topography of the site. In conclusion, the applicant should clarify their plans regarding lighting for the subject awning, and the board should discuss whether it wishes to waive the previously listed elements. The planning department supports waiving the above- referenced site plan elements due to the minor nature of the project. Should the board choose to waive these elements, the application will be otherwise complete. However, the applicant will need to obtain the necessary relief from the zoning board before the site plan can be formally deemed complete and ready to be scheduled for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Will.
One thing to add, we were able to locate and submit fully shielded string lights, and we submitted them, so they will be ready for the next review, which should come up pretty quickly because this is very minor, although we still have to wait for the zoning board.
Yeah. I didn't know there were shielded string lights, that's interesting. Okay, cool. Right, so that is, you, Reed?
Yeah, I agree with Lori that this is, this is a minor application. I was actually out there this, this past weekend. What a great spot, a beautiful view, nice resort, well-maintained. I met with Andre, who I believe is the property manager, a nice guy. He had told me that the awning has been up for about five years, it was put up by a previous manager. Previous manager did, never submitted paperwork to properly put it up, so that's why it's before us now. Again, I, I think this makes sense, it's not obstructing anyone's view, there are no homes that are impacted by it, so I'm fine with it. When I was there, there was actually no lighting underneath of it. I will say that the restaurant there, it was a Japanese restaurant last summer, I believe, and now it's going to become a Mexican restaurant, and I looked inside because the awning is directly adjacent to the restaurant, and I saw lights in there on a table, so I don't know if those are the compliant lights that they're going to put up here over the next few days or whenever it's approved, but I'm not opposed to lighting whatsoever as long as it's compliant, so that's my take.
Gotcha, okay. Any other thoughts? Anyone? Pretty simple?
Seems good, yeah.
Okay, so really, the only, the only real issue is should the applicant clarify the lighting plans? You've already talked, Lori, about that, about how that might happen. It's sort of a move or shield, and you're coming up with shield, so I think we're, we're good.
Yep.
So there was a request that's been made to clarify that. And do we agree to waive the elements of site plan that Will enumerated that are really not germane to this, right?
Yes.
And I think we all agree, yes.
Yes.
So, that's where we are, Lori.
All right, well, thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, so next up is the Scoville Hall Generator and Terrace, and Bruce, that's you. Chris, you're here, good, that's your application. And who's, Rick, are you for Scoville Hall? Okay. Chris, please.
So this is the Scoville Hall and Generator Site Plan at 17 Meeting House Lane in Amagansett. This was last reviewed in July 24 of last year. Just to show where we are in the community, it's Meeting House Lane, you have the school nearby. Jump into the proposal itself. So the Scoville Hall operates as a fellowship hall for the First Person Superior Church of Amagansett, and it's available to rent for family and community events. The property's owned B residential, it's .64 acres, and its current use is as semi-public facility as defined by the Town Code. The current improvements are the two-story and 6,430 square foot building and 29 surface parking spaces. So going into the application itself, it was originally submitted to construct a brick patio, some fencing with privet on both sides, as well as a concrete dumpster pad and a well pit to house a generator. It was also to relocate a shed, which has since been removed, and the application has been revised to only include these 22, no, excuse me, 270 square foot patio, as well as some privet, which is indicated here on the survey. There's no lighting proposed in the existing lighting on site, it appears to comply with the Town Code. The applicant requested that this be treated as a minor site plan. Since the patio is less than 500 square feet and it's not a habitable structure, the planning department agreed, and during the last review, the planning board agreed to waive the requirement for public hearing. So the issues for discussion were during the last review, the board asked the applicant to indicate the area of the patio as well as some dimensions for the parking lots and drive aisles. Both those details were added to the plan, and now the planning department finds the application complete and ready for approval, and the board should determine whether it agrees.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Whelan?
Richard Whelan, landmarks for the Scoville operation. Thank you, Chris. Seems pretty straightforward. We do know we have to, even though it's a bit silly, we have to get ARB approval for the terrace, even though it's at grade, because that's what the code says, so hopefully you're ready for an approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce, what are your thoughts?
Well, thanks, Chris, thanks, Rick. I think this is fine. What, 270 square feet of brick on grade and some privet, so.
Right, okay.
They're under coverage for the lot, even with the massive parking lot, so it's fine.
All right, good.
Yeah, it's about the size of a dance floor.
Something is needed outside the building, even though it's very small.
Yes, I'm familiar with it, I think you're right, absolutely. Okay. Any other comments from anyone on, on the application? If so, do we believe that this is complete and ready for approval?
Yes.
Yes.
We do, right? Okay, well done. Have a good night. Okay. So the last work session item is 68 Meeting House Lane Trust Lot Line Modification. Jen, that's you, Chris, that's you again. And who is here? Is that you, Mike? Okay. All right, Chris.
All right, so this project is also on Meeting House Lane. It's a proposed lot line modification between 6008 Meeting House Lane and 7 Holly Way. The subject parcels are also owned B residence and are not in any town overlay districts or areas of important environmental consideration. 6008 Meeting House Lane, Lot 1 is improved with an existing 2,692 square foot two-story residence, gravel driveway and slate patio, 7 Holly Way, Lot 2 is improved with a 4,404 square foot two-story residence, detached garage, swimming pool, pool patio, and two pool patios with pergolas. The latest certificates of occupancy for both properties are attached, and the planning department notes that this CO4 Lot 1 does show this pool, which has since been removed with a recent building permit. You can see here in the pictures, there's no pool anymore, this is back in March, so that's no longer an issue for discussion. So the application was made for a proposed lot line modification between the subject properties, which proposes to transfer a portion of 608 Meeting House Lane to the adjacent 7 Holly Way. The area proposed to transfer is 3,246 square feet. Lot 2 is proposed to increase in size to 26,789 square feet. Lot 1 is proposed to decrease in size to 20,620 square feet. Both proposed lot sizes comply with the 20,000 square foot minimum lot area in the B Residence Selling District, and the proposed modification would change the shapes of both parcels from rectangular to irregular polygons, which I will discuss further. Going on to the issues for discussion, pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, it's a type-two action, both Chapter 128 of the Town Code, has not subject to additional review under secret. Regarding informed consent, the applicant details that both parcels are owned by separate LLCs with the same principal members, given such written consent should be provided between the two LLCs to formalize owner authorization of the proposal. So regarding the lot shape, which I mentioned, the proposed shape for both parcels does not align with the standards set forth in the Town Code, Section 220-1.09, Part C of the code states the following pertaining to the shape, and that quote, "In general, lots shall be rectangular in shape somewhat deeper than they are wide," end quote. The proposed modification would change the existing rectangular lots into irregular shapes, which will likely complicate future development on Lot 1. The width of the center of Lot 1 would be reduced to approximately 65 feet, and the planning department finds that the proposal may make future planning of Lot 1 more difficult, which does not conform with the requirements of Section 220-2.18 of the Town Code, specifically Part C, which is quoted in our report. The transferred area would reduce setbacks to the existing slate patio and residence on Lot 1. It appears that these structures will meet setback requirements, however, they should be indicated on the revised submission to confirm such. The planning department notes that the minimum lot width for the subject parcels is 100 feet, since both parcels existed prior to December 1984. Lot width is defined by the Town Code as, quote, "The length of the shortest line which can be drawn from side lot line to side lot line of a lot which touches the building line at any point," end quote. Since the 65-foot width is proposed in a portion of the property which does not cross the building line, as defined by the Town Code, this reduced width technically does not create a non-conforming lot width. The planning board should discuss whether they support this change and whether it will impact the future development of the subject parcels, and the planning department recommends that the proposed configuration does not align with the Town Code and is not in the interest of good planning. Regarding existing structures, the sanitary system for Lot 1 should be indicated to, in general, and to confirm that the Suffolk County Department of Health Services setbacks would still be met by the proposed arrangement. We'd also like to see the water service line for Lot 1 indicated, and the electrical service lines indicated for both properties. Regarding other approvals, Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval will ultimately be required if the board chooses to approve this project, and it wasn't included in the report, but the fire marshal review was received today, and there are no issues requiring further review from the Office of Fire Prevention. So in conclusion, the application is incomplete pending the submission of the required items and the resolution of the mentioned issues. The board should discuss whether they generally support the proposal and whether it will impact the future planning for the subject parcels, and the applicant should consider revising the proposed lot configuration to be more rectangular to align with the Town Code, and it's not mentioned in the report, but the applicant should also provide a rationale for why they want this lot line modification. And that's everything from us.
Before we let you go and go to the applicant, Chris, I'm just curious, what is the, what's the square footage of the two properties, the two houses that are currently on the properties?
Sure, so Lot 2 is improved with a 4,404 square foot house, and Lot 1 has a 2,692 square foot house. For Lot 2, I would note that with the amending GFA calculation, even if they were to be granted this additional space, they will not be able to expand their current GFA, and even with the current GFA formula, they are beyond that threshold. So there's no way in this project, existing or proposed, that the GFA should be expanded on Lot 2 without a variance.
Could they build an accessory, yeah, can they build an accessory 600 square foot affordable housing unit there?
As long as they comply with the building and total lot coverage, that's feasible if they meet other, other aspects of the code setbacks and whatnot.
Or any accessory structure for that.
Yeah, patio, accessory structures. Tennis courts, very not likely, just due to the 50-foot setback requirement. There would be space for additional structures.
All right, yeah, that was sort of the reason for my question, was figure out what actually is possible for a lot like this. Mr. Savelinski?
Hi, I'm Savelinski, Scoville Ball Firm, 860 Montauk Highway, order mill for the applicants. First off, I wanted to thank Chris for meeting us out of the property. We walked to the property last week with him. We didn't, we got his comments on Friday. I took a look at them over the weekend with my client to engage their landscape architect, architects to take a look at it. The, my client acquired about a year ago, acquired the 68 Meeting House property, which is the property on the right, and in doing so, the goal was to use both properties somewhat in conjunction. So when you talk about proper, you know, proper planning and limiting of the possibilities of future uses of that 68 Meeting House site, that's exactly why we want to make these changes, is because that's exactly why we want to make these changes is because they want a limited use. That's why the pool was already removed pursuant to a demolition permit. And they intend to use it as a guest house. They are in the process of designing and redesigning the 7-Holly property for what's outside of it. They originally had intended, if I can just point it out. We originally were looking at moving the pool from this area and placing it over in this area, moving the poolhouse there. I think the goals have somewhat shifted. And I think that we're, after going through some design work with their landscape architects and their designers, I think the pool is going to be redeveloped in this area with a poolhouse as well. So this shot, which was designed to, you know, we've owned both properties. Both properties are going to be used in conjunction. Both properties will eventually, you know, when my clients are done with them, you know, whatever it will shall be, they'll probably be sold in conjunction with each other, although they remain single and separate. So in order to avoid going and seeking variances, what we wanted to do is shift the property line in order to allow for this proper setbacks for any redevelopment on this site, as well as providing some additional square footage that they would need for this being their, you know, anchor house or main house, as opposed to this, which is going to be used as a guest cottage and guest house.
Why would you seek a variance? Why would you need to seek a variance because you're moving?
Because if the lot line was, if the lot line was here.
Yeah.
If the lot line was here and we needed, we needed to put something in here. We originally were planning to put in this space here. And they were considering doing something else over here. The extra square footage that this provides that shifts from this line to this line helps us with the GFA.
So something else would be like an addition or something?
But in addition, and we originally were scheduled, we originally were looking at putting a pool, the pool in into this area, as opposed to here and shifting it around.
But that's no longer the plan.
That's no longer the plan. So I do have a new schematic for the board to consider. And sorry, my folding skills and...
Unfortunately, we can't.
Can't. We're going to submit it. So the new, the new plan shifts this line, gets rid of this, gets rid of this jut to such an extent, it comes down, it comes down and just shifts over once. And it's much more in line with the original.
So that's not an accurate picture that's up there?
This was what we originally submitted. And we've, and we've gone through, after speaking with Chris and receiving his feedback, we've started redesigning in order to, you know, try to bring more into line a, the recommendations in the code. As this board knows, the rectangular, the rectangular shape standard in the code is only a recommendation. It's not some, you know, it's not some, you know, hard and fast rule it needs to be done, especially when you're talking about something that's being held in conjunction with something else and eventually, and is used and owned in conjunction with a neighboring property. You know, I will point out to the board, I will point out to the board that if it was a hard and fast rule, this subdivision never would have happened because they wouldn't have been allowed to put into this, you know, this corner, you know, cut out this corner. They would have required this to be a rectangle here. So it's not a hard and fast rule, it's just, it's just a standard. I think the standard of this board, while keeping it under the current circumstances, the circumstances presented to it are much different than, and not as such a consideration for the board for this.
But you have to admit that the little ledge on the corner compared to that weird triangle jutting into Lot 1 is a big, is a big difference. And yes, it's, the code doesn't, doesn't mandate that it's rectangular. But one, the example you pointed out is really not that far from the code suggestion, whereas the other one goes way far out of the box.
Well, I'll tell you that, and that's, and it's partially by design. The design of this property is to keep, is to keep, you know, by putting the jut into this area, is to keep development of this, to keep development of this parcel up here in the northeast corner, as opposed to having it, be able to shift down and having additional things here. It actually, it's, it's done in order to partially sterilize the use of the back of that property.
So the new proposal is to move the lot line a certain amount at the top of the lot. And then when it comes down towards the middle, it moves it further.
It moves less. It comes down, it comes down in this, it comes down in this fashion. And then it gets to about here, it jogs over and down.
Straight down.
Straight down.
Okay. All right.
It's a much, much, much less pronounced jut, shall we say.
All right, since we're not really considering that specifically because we don't have that in front of us, or I think we should just comment on, you know, the intention and, you know, get our feedback about this opportunity to, generally, right? Since we don't really have a specific proposal that you'd want to stand by.
Well, this is your application. Yeah, yeah.
I'm setting the tone here.
Reed, it's mood lighting.
So we're not discussing, I understand your intention.
Yeah. Jen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Slansky. Thank you, Chris. Without seeing the next, you know, iteration of the design, you know, I can't say exactly. But I, I'm not a fan of the intention. I think that if the, you know, I think that the town has recommendations for the shape of lots for a reason. Is it in the interest of good planning, which is something we ask ourselves? You know, I understand that the lots are owned by, by the same owners. And if the intention is to keep them together kind of in perpetuity, then why not merge it and make it one big thing instead of...
Because if you do, that would require a variance. Because if we merge them together, if we merge them together, you have two single-family residents on one lot.
Property, okay.
That's why, that's why it can't be merged.
And I, I just, you know, I, things happen. And while I understand that the intention is for the two LLCs to hold them in conjunction forever, families fight, people, you know. And, you know, if lot, the smaller, the one that will be the smaller lot, is that Lot 1 or Lot 2?
Lot 1.
If Lot 1 is sold separately, then it's, you know, value is, you know, substantially decreased by the transfer of property to the other lot. So I just, I'm not sure there's a good enough reason to do this. You know, we obviously, you know, it's your, it's your property and, but in looking at this, it doesn't seem like it's in the interest of good planning or in the interest of good planning specifically for that one, that one lot.
But the lots are, the lots still remain conforming, you realize, right?
They do remain conforming, but I think the planning department's point that the shape of the lots is, you know, it is a recommendation. It's, you know, it is the lanes. And part of the reason that the town has gone through the whole GFA rejiggering recently is to kind of avoid things like this where one lot in a neighborhood is overbuilt and the other lot is, is not. So that's my, that's my overarching feeling. And without seeing an actual plan, it is kind of hard to, to, to say.
Sure.
Okay. So let's have a discussion about it. Ava, do you have thoughts on this?
As presented, I do agree that specifically that Lot 1, by doing this plan, certainly would impact future planning, albeit regardless of, like you said, if it's held or the intent is to be held in perpetuity. If in the future that was not the case, that would become a very challenging planning decision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to, you know, as weird as this shape looks, then I realize that, you know, we have this abstract recommendation in the code to keep lots rectangular in shape. But I'm trying to figure out what harm would that do? And I know you're going to change this, the way you're increasing the lot size of Lot 1. I'm sorry, that's Lot 2, right? We're increasing the size of Lot 2. I'm trying to figure out what detriment could you, could anyone come up with in terms of expanding GFA or any other violation of good planning that you could, you could come up with that would, that this expansion of lot size allow you to do? Now, Chris, I think has already said that GFA cannot be increased in Lot 2, right? It's, it's at the maximum now and at, at the new lot size that you're proposing, correct?
We can provide those numbers, yeah. I don't know if there's...
So that's, that's out of, that's out of consideration.
Will Chris answer the, what?
Yeah.
Answer the question, please.
That is correct. Currently, it's, it's beyond the allowed GFA. And come July 1st, it will also be beyond as the formula reduces.
I think both lots, just two.
Just Lot 2. Lot 1 will remain in conformance, even if it loses that area. And with the new formula, will still be conforming with the allowed GFA.
And accessory structures? Sorry, I can't see, Chris. Accessory structures, what's the potential for accessory structures on that?
It just depends on the, the coverage amounts. We only have the building coverages on the submitted plan. It's near capacity on Lot 2, but there'll be more room for additional building coverage if they are granted additional lot area. But as far as the total lot coverage, I can't speak to that without those numbers.
Well, maybe the next time we review it with the new configuration, maybe we can get those numbers and...
Sure, we're glad to provide those numbers.
You know, because that could be another way.
What those, what those numbers will show, what those numbers will show is that this, this property, the GFA on this property remains conforming. And the GFA on this property, which is now not, not conforming, but pre-existing non-conforming, this pre-existing non-conforming will then become closer to conforming because you're adding, you're adding more lot area.
But it will still be non-conforming.
Under the old code or the new code, GFA codes?
Oh. So they can't build, they can't expand that house even if they get approval from us to expand the lot.
Correct.
But we don't know whether they can expand coverage and put some other accessory structure on the lot. So we would need to know that, whether that's feasible and what they could do there. Because I would want to know how they could exploit this additional lot size so that we can make a determination based on that.
I would, I would object to the use of the word exploit, but sure.
Sorry, I take it back. We could substitute any word that you feel comfortable with. As far as the... As far as the sizing of the lot, you know, with this jutting out and your new configuration that you'll submit, it's, I don't, I don't really, that really doesn't bother me because the outside dimensions are still, you know, rectangular. You know what I'm saying? It's only the interior that expands.
It's, it's moving, it's moving a line between...
Right, right.
Inside.
So in that, as far as the code's recommendation for rectangular shapes, I really don't have a problem with, with what you're doing. I, like I said, I'm really more concerned how you can take advantage. Would you accept that word?
I would say utilize is probably the best, is the best term. It lasts a percentage.
Maximally utilize this and not violate good planning. So those, those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Lou. Reed?
Yeah, so the visual doesn't work for me. I think that's just odd-looking. And I don't really understand why, because they want to do an addition or, maybe I didn't get that. But again, you said that a revision has been made, so I wouldn't be opposed to something perhaps a little bit more, I don't know, a little less pronounced than...
Yeah. Yeah. Absolutely. Look, we're definitely willing to work. We heard Chris's comments.
Yeah.
We put something together. Obviously, we can't submit to you now, but we will, in a submit it next time we're here, along with the, you know, the dimensional request that the board's made.
Anything else, Reed?
Yeah, no, I agree with, with Reed. I think visually, it's a little awkward. So I think there's a better solution, probably, to trade off lot area. So, yeah, it'd just be interesting to see what you guys come up with.
Yeah. The, the new line that you've drawn that we can't see, does that take less, fewer square feet?
Same amount.
Same amount.
It's the same amount because you have, you have to take the same amount because of you, that, that keeps this, that keeps this as a legal structure. And we're trying to, we're trying to take everything that's not needed here to put here.
And keep it conforming.
And to keep it conforming, yeah.
First to see the line that you've drawn.
I would love to show it to you. It is council's first night here, you know, but I don't want to, I don't want to risk, I don't want, I don't want to risk upsetting the applicant, you know. But we'll gladly provide that along with the dimensional requirements next time we're...
All right, so, you know, work to do, obviously, right? We, as I was saying earlier, you know, we're really dealing with a concept here. We're really not, we're not dealing with your, the, I think you're actually going to ask us to, to really, you know...
But this is fine, having, having your comments tonight, having your comments tonight on the concept will greatly, greatly augment our ability to provide you with a plan.
Yeah, I think, I think it's been useful to you. But I, and I just to kind of conclude on my own thoughts about this. I mean, I think it's an extreme accommodation to a very particular circumstance. And, you know, as others have said, you know, if this is really about creating a family compound or we're going to do this forever and all, you know, things don't last forever, they just don't. And I think that anything like this, that's this irregular, is going to cause issues down the line, I think, right? If that old house is sold, you know, separately to someone else, it's a very peculiar situation. But it sounds like where you're headed is something that's a little bit more regular, right?
It is.
And when we look at that, I think some of us will have maybe a different view of it. But as it stands now, and I don't frankly really understand the purpose still.
The purpose is to switch square footage into lot.
Yeah, but why is the question?
It's to accommodate, it's to accommodate a redevelopment of the, of the property, of the exterior of the property.
Right. Well, but right, you know, the plan you're showing us, though, doesn't really...
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't address that, right? The pool is actually in a place where it could be without this.
That's existing, that's the existing pool.
But I thought you said that's where you were thinking of redeveloping it.
They're still, they're still, they're still designing it.
Okay. But again, it's this very particular accommodation thing that really bothers me a little bit, right?
But if you, if you look at it from a planning perspective, right? We're still maintaining this four corners. I believe this is, I believe it was, remember Cortese's point, Cortese's point is that you have the four corners of the, you know, it's still remaining a square. Going back to remember Folks' point, if we could, we would gladly merge the two together, but we would lose the opportunity to have a single-family residence. And, you know, that's probably something that the Town Code at some point needs to address when they're addressing all the other provisions of the Town Code. And, but that's, you know, that's, you know, maybe there, you can have some, you know, compound zoning classification at some point in the future that would allow for that.
All right, well, hopefully you've gotten some good feedback from us.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
That'll lead us to the next submission.
Can you put the setbacks on your new...
Yes, we will, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be better.
Yeah.
So these questions might be moved, but let's look at them. Does the planning board generally support the proposed lot line modification?
I think, I know.
Not yet, how about that? Does the planning board agree the proposal would impact future planning for the subject parcels?
Yes.
Submitted.
Yeah.
As submitted, yes, it does. Agreement? Okay. Does the planning board agree the revised submission should indicate the location of existing sanitary systems and water and electrical service lines?
Yes.
Of course it should, yeah. And I think, you know, the closer we get to the sort of re, you know, re-engineering the outside, moving pool, that kind of thing, the closer we get to the reality of really what you want to do, the better, of course, right?
Just to confirm what you folks want, I think you could also ask, does the board want to see the total lot coverage and setbacks indicated on the...
Yes, please, yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. To be a bounce. All right. Okay, into our regular meeting. We have a couple of approvals. Ava, I think you've got Pinkerton Farm, do you have that resolution?
I don't have it, actually.
Okay.
In, in the matter of the application of Pinkerton Farm Site Plan Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-166-4-1.4, I've reviewed the site plan approval and moved to approve it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. You did? All right, all right. All right, unanimous. Thank you. Fifty-five Wayne Scott Hollow, Bruce?
Yes, okay. In the matter of the application of fifty-five Wayne Scott Hollow LLC, final subdivision, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-197-4-2.1, I have read the resolution for amending their approval, and, yeah, I move for it.
Okay. A second? Second, Jen, thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Glen Valley, Ava, back to you again.
The matter of the application of Glen Valley Associates LTD, final subdivision, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-136-1-30.2, I've read the resolution amending previous approval.
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Yes, and I...
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All around, good, nicely done. Okay, pass to Carrie. We have one, uh, Maidstone is not, do we have, oh, extension of time?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was added. So whose is that?
It says Jones.
I'll do that. Mister Jones.
In the matter of the application of Maidstone Acres Number Two Site Plan Suffolk County Tax Map Number 300-38-4-1 dot two, for an extension of time for a period of one year within which to obtain a building permit or until July 26, 2025, I've read the resolution and I move for its adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question about the time. You said it for one year or until July, this July?
July 26, 2025, that should be July 26.
That's not a year.
It's either or.
Either or, okay.
Oh, or until July 26, 22.
No, they didn't request in the proper amount of time, so they were lapsed for quite some time.
I see, so it is only a year from their last, okay.
I see, okay, so that is correct. All right, no, good question. Did you second? Were you the second? Who was the second on this?
We already...
We already went through, but now you've thrown shade on the whole thing.
I'll second it.
All right, I think we're all good, right? Right, with the dates, okay.
I like it.
Yeah.
Shade, I just was curious.
Just kidding. All right, we have one old file map modification. Eric, this was really just a, an issue of changing of the access to a different street than the one that we talked about last time, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, so this was discussed on May 7th. I'm showing you the location of the property here in Springs. The town engineer and planning department supported the request, which was just to move the required access point from Fort Pon Boulevard on the north here to Eau Claire Street. However, that was not what the applicant was proposing. They were proposing to move the access from Fort Pon Boulevard to Corbin Avenue on the other side of the property. The town engineer and planning department still have no issue with that. The town engineer did make a point that driveways are supposed to be a minimum of 50 feet away from intersections. It looks like the driveway on a survey for a proposed home was 45 feet away, so they just made the suggestion to relocate it another five feet, so it's 50 feet away from the intersection. But that is actually not really a consideration or condition for the planning board. The town board approves or denies these requests, so it's a recommended condition that we'll forward on to the town board. We mentioned it for you, but our recommendation to send favorable comments to the town board still holds.
Okay. Do we all have favorable comments of putting the access on Corbin Avenue instead of Eau Claire Street?
Yes.
Everyone's good on that? Okay, all right. Thanks, Eric. I think we've dealt with that one. So Tina, you've joined us.
Hello.
So tell us about the planning applications best practice study.
Okay, thanks, Ed, and hello, planning board. Nice to see you all, Tina Lagarant for the planning department. I am here to just do a brief introduction about a special study that we're doing, and we've been working with Ed, and he asked that we give a short introduction so the board knows what's coming in the next couple of months. So in January, it's not advancing, hold on, okay, sorry about that. In January, one of the first things I did after I got appointed as director was work with council member Kate Rogers to ask the board to allocate some funding so that we could pursue a contract that had outside consulting experts involved in reviewing our planning, our site plan application process, and what we're going to do with them is conduct a best practice study. Having worked in a range of settings in my career, I realize how important it is every once in a while just to step back and freshen up at what you're doing, what's working, what could be improved, and, and document that and kind of learn and move forward with those things in mind. So the goals of the work are very simple. We want to enhance efficiency, make the planning review process more streamlined, both for ourselves and the planning department, but also for the applicants, and ensure our approaches are consistent. Can you all hear me? I don't have some voice. Ensure our approaches are consistent, right? The same issue should be handled the same way in, in all the cases, right? And, and that doesn't bar nuance, but it, you know, there should be consistency in the reviews, and we should have the tools that allow us to do that in a streamlined fashion. And so that's the intro. In February, we received their proposal from the consultant. In March, we had the contract approved, and then in April, we kicked off the work. So I'll talk very quickly about the study's scope. It's really just two phases of work. The first phase is a detailed existing conditions review with the consultants. They'll review the existing site plan rules and regulations, the forms, our written procedures, the instructions we provide to applicants, and then, of course, we're also talking some about OpenGov, right? Because we did just launch an online system, so we've just recently transferred our process onto that online platform, and we want to make sure that the solutions that we come up with are cognizant, that we have this new tool to utilize. So they're going to review, document kind of the baseline process, and then summarize the observations, like what are potential ways we could improve efficiency, and, and what would that look like? And, you know, just to give an example, I think one of the things we'll be looking at is how do we consider projects complete enough for a planning board review? You know, a lot of times, we end up asking for the same information twice or more times, whether that's a miscommunication or whatever it is, it costs the planning department time, you know, saying the same comment again, it costs the planning board having to repeat themselves, and it, it costs the owners time and money in the process because they're kind of waiting for this information to be produced rather than having everything together and being able to make a cohesive discussion. So I think we'll look to, you know, that could be one thing, that we have new rules for what do we mean in terms of having a work session conversation when the applicant's ready for a work session conversation, I mean. So task two is implementation, right? So we're going to talk with the consultant about their observations and findings, see what makes sense, right? You know, they're coming from outside. I, I'm sure everything that they want us to do will not be feasible, practical, et cetera, but we will work with them to find the highest impact improvement strategies and then work to implement them. Once we have ideas of what we want to do, obviously, we're going to talk with the planning board about them, share with you our findings and the aspirations for where we want to go. I'm sure we'll also talk to the town board about it and provide them with that information. You know, there could be many different types, like update review templates, update application instructions, update checklists for both ourselves and the applicants, and just find ways to kind of clean up the process. You know, importantly, our, our goal right now is that the work is going to be done in accordance with our code, but we are looking at the code, and I would expect that there may be some things that the consultant recommends may need to be tweaked. I mean, I think we all have ideas, right? We were talking about it earlier today, things we could clean up in the code that would help us run things more smoothly. So we'll be open to hearing those types of things as well, and obviously, those are longer-term strategies, right? Because code changes take time. So, and I, I do want to note, you know, that site plan review, anywhere you go, not just in East Hampton, is a complicated process. It's lengthy, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of requirements, so I, you know, I don't think we're going to have a magic wand scenario where we, poof, okay, this is, you know, it was complicated and it became easy, but we're going to have kind of a modernized approach to how we conduct the process, and it's going to help us be supporting our goal of protecting the towns, communities, and natural resources, right? So that's really the ultimate goal, make, make sure we're doing that in the most efficient way possible for ourselves and the residents of the town. So that's really it. We just kicked off the work in April, and within the next few months, we expect to be back here sharing the findings of the study.
Good, thanks, Tina.
Sure.
You know, the part, I just want to say, the part, the part that I find most sort of exciting about this is kind of aligning applicants' expectations with ours, you know, and really determining, you know, when is it appropriate to have somebody back for a work session or not? How complete, you know, do, do they need to be, right? Because as, as you pointed out, this is frustrating for everyone, that the applicants often think that they don't understand what they were expected to produce for, you know, and we often are like, well, wait a minute, we told you already. And it just, it's, it elongates the process, it's frustrating, and, you know, if we can figure out how to really make that, that whole process sing in a very different way, it would be huge for everybody.
Does OpenGov kind of address the, the checks that the applicant needs to check off to before they submit something?
So OpenGov has like a list of documents, let's say now, that they have to submit when they initially make an application for various types of the applications that we offer. So they have to have something, you know, is it complete, right? Does it have all the information, like if you have a survey, does it have all the information that we want on the survey? That's the question. And so, while that has like the kind of high-level process steps, we're talking about kind of the, the nitty-gritty of the review, and how do we make sure that our checklists are, we have checklists now, but it's like, how do we make them easy to use and, and that level of detail that OpenGov doesn't go to? And how do we be clear? You know, I mean, I think we want to make sure we're being as clear as possible to, to empower people to be like, okay, I know exactly what they want, and I'm going to do it, right? Rather than anything else.
Good, thank you. It's a great effort, Tina, thank you so much. I think this is going to be really good.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Tina? Any other comments?
Thank you, Tina.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so our final, final move for the night is to prove our minutes from May 21st. I'm sure everyone has read them, end to end, there were a lot of them from that last meeting.
It's a lot of them.
I'm going to turn it over to, to Reed, who usually, usually has something to say about it.
I looked, I thought they looked fine. I didn't see any issues.
Wow, would you like to propose it? Would you like to propose adopting them?
Sure, I make a motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
All in favor of adopting the minutes? All right, great, thank you, Jody, for the minutes, and then one more.
I make a motion to adjourn.
And is there a second? Okay, so lots of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.